If you would like to join me and stand, we're going to say the Lord Prayer and then have a pledge. Before we do, I would like for us to have a few moments of silence. We first want to continue to remember Chuckie Godfrey, the Commissioner, who passed away, his family in our prayers. We certainly have them here tonight and we do that. We also want to remember Mayor Robbie Fox, who is at the hospital and is sick, so we will remember Mayor Fox. And also want to remember Judge Ogle, who's had some surgery at Vanderbilt University. We'll have a moment of silence before we agree, and then I'll lead us in the Lord Prayer. So would you all join me if you will in a moment?
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Mr. Delius, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll officially call the meeting to order now, and our first item of business is for Commissioners to please mark present and order that we may... Clerk, would you please announce the number of present?
Twenty-five present.
Thank you. The next item of business is item number three, the consideration of appointment to the Sevier County Board of Commissioners to see, to fill the vacant seat on District Nine, Seat B. And certainly, this is something that all of us are extremely saddened to have to do and wish we didn't have to do it, but we're having to address this because the unfortunate and untimely passing of Commissioner Godfrey. So we're going to now proceed to this item three, which is filling District Nine, Seat B, the Sevier County Board of Commissioners. In accordance with TCA Title V, the Sevier County Board of Commissioners will now fill this vacant seat until the certification of the special election, which will take place on August the first. Commissioners may make a motion to nominate a candidate to fill this vacant seat. The nomination must receive a second. Members of the audience may make a recommendation by stepping to the podium and be recognized by the Chairman. However, a Commissioner must then submit a motion and receive a second to place that recommendation in consideration by the body. The Steering Committee of the Sevier County Commission has met earlier and has submitted the recommendation of Melissa Godfrey. That recommendation also will receive, must receive a motion and a second. And it won't be necessary for Ms. Godfrey to have someone in the audience to speak on her behalf, because she has been recommended by the Steering Committee. So at this time, I will open the floor for anyone that would like to come to the podium and make a recommendation of nominations for candidates to fill the District Nine, Seat B, of the Sevier County Board of Commissioners. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to request a nomination? If you do, you have this opportunity to do that, and this is according to TCA Title V. We have to, this is a procedure that the state legislature has laid out that we have to follow in order to be able to see. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make a nomination? Hearing no, hearing no one in the audience, then we'll declare that portion of this meeting closed, and I will therefore open the floor for the county Commissioners to make a nomination to seal, to fill the seat, District Nine, Seat B, of the Sevier County Board of Commissioners. The floor is now open. Nominations. We have a nomination from the floor. We have to have a motion and a second to confirm the Steering Committee's nomination of Ms. Godfrey.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Steering Committee's recommendation and recommend Ms. Godfrey for that seat.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have other nominations from the Commission? Okay, hearing none, I declare the nominations closed, and I'll ask the Clerk, since we need to vote on this. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Warren Hurst.
Yes, yes.
Tommy Watts.
Yes.
Brandon Hedrick.
Yes.
Don McGill.
Yes.
Dell Hill.
Yes.
Mike Chambers.
Yes.
Jack Parton.
Yes.
Ronnie Whaley.
Yes.
Carol Rahuff.
Yes.
Michael Madron.
Yes.
Frank Parton.
Yes.
Fred Achley.
Yes.
Chad Ogle.
Yes.
Carol Pittner.
Yes.
Scott Catlett.
Yes.
Ronnie Allen.
Yes.
Aaron Foster.
Yes.
Kent Woods.
Yes.
Mike Killard.
Yes.
Greg Haggard.
Yes.
Todd Humble.
Yes.
Ron Delius.
Yes.
Gary Cole.
Yes.
Ray Ogle.
Yes.
We have twenty-five.
Okay, the nomination, Mrs. Godfrey. First, I should ask if anyone wants to change their vote. That's a procedure we have to follow. Request to change a vote. Hearing no requests to change ver, vote. Madam Clerk has already announced the results of the vote, and that results of that vote is Godfrey has been nominated and confirmed, filled a seat, her late husband, Chuckie Godfrey. So I will proceed to swear her in.
You put your left hand on your left hand. And I will say aye, and then you put your name, and then I will go through. Say aye. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I will perform the fidelity to duty, the office which I have been appointed and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution and the City and the United States and faithfully perform the duties of County Commissioner representing the nine district seats of Sevier County, and so help me God. All I want you to do is sign right here, and you can let your seat, and I'll give you an opportunity if you'd like to say something.
Let me say that I know how difficult this, this evening is, especially for now Commissioner Godfrey and the family. I appreciate her willingness to do this. It took a lot of courage, and I recognize that, and I just want to say thank you for being willing to do this, and I think, I think Chuckie would have been proud that you were willing to take this task on. Matter of fact, I know he would, and so I appreciate, appreciate you doing that. So, having done that, we'll consider, we'll go on to the next item, which is item four on the agenda, which is consideration of a proclamation, 2024-04-01, to recognize the Sevier County High School Girls Basketball Team making the 2024 T double S double A Class A A A State Tournament. We have that resolution which... I will read this, and then I think we have a presentation to make. It's a proclamation recognizing the Sevier County High School Girls Basketball Team making the 2024 T double S double A Class Four A State Tournament. Whereas the Sevier County High School Girls Basketball Team recently completed a historical year, and whereas they finished, they finished the season with a record of thirty-one and four, were regular season district champions, district tournament champions, region tournament champions, sectional champions, and made the T double S double A Class Four A State Tournament. And whereas Aubrey Laney was named to the All District Team, All District Tournament Team, and All District Tournament, All Region Tournament Team. Whereas Kinley Lovey was named to the All District Team, All District Tournament Team, and was named MVP of the All Region Team. Sybil Penland was named to the All District Team, All District Tournament Team, and the All Region Team. And Caleb Burden was named to the All District Team additionally. Aubrey, Aubrey Laney, Kinley Lovey, and Sybil Penland each eclipsed a thousand points scored for their high, high school career during the season. And whereas we're here to honor all of this team, including the assistant coaches, as well as we had the bookkeeper, Paula Holloway, athletic director Brian Achley, assistant coaches Olivia Campbell and Beth Onby, and head coach Jonathan Schulz. All of these folks displayed exceptional sportsmanship, maturity, and perseverance. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County, and the members of Sevier County Commission do proclaim that we honor and congratulate the outstanding accomplishment, efforts, and triumphs of the Sevier County High School Girls Basketball Team on a job well done, proclaimed this fifteenth day of April, 2024. It is further ordered that the eighteen ninety-six bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at seven fifteen PM on this day to celebrate this accomplishment. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you move, you have moved to the voting screen, which is good. Commissioners, if you would, cast your votes. Ah, they were there now. Okay. Would anyone like to change their vote? Any... Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Twenty-five yes votes. The proclamation has been properly adopted, and now I'll get the distinct honor of presenting the coaches and girls for this proclamation.
I would call this a thorn in my throat, if you'd like. I'm getting this one, y'all. If I could even say again, congratulations to the team. As I told them earlier, what a great accomplishment for them to play in the state tournament. It took a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work, and we appreciate them, and they represented Sevier County well. And I mentioned their coach, Coach Schulz. He's been having some health difficulties. We certainly need to keep him in our prayers, because he's, he's having certainly some, some health issues, but we wish him well and continue to do that. So, girls, thank you again. Thank you for allowing us to honor you. I want you to know that the folks, the citizens of Sevier County is extremely proud for what you accomplished in this last basketball season. Well, let's give him a hand.
Now, we can move on to item number five on the agenda, which is consideration of proclamation, 2024-04-02, to recognize Kings Academy Girls Basketball Team on advancing to the 2024 T double S double A Class Two A State Championship. Said, we're now proceeding to item five, and I think we're bringing the proclamation to the floor and have done that. And I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation at this time, and I will now read that and then give any opportunity for anyone that would like to comment on it, and then we'll have a vote and do a presentation. Proclamation recognizing the Kings Academy Girls Basketball Team for making the 2024 T double S double A Division Two State Tournament, Division Two A. Whereas the Kings Academy Girls Basketball Team recently completed a historical year. Whereas they finished the season with a record of twenty-three and eight, were district tournament runner-up, region tournament runner-up, and made the T double S, T double S double A Division Two A State Tournament for the second consecutive year. Whereas Skylar Walden was named the All District Team and All State Tournament Team, and Brad, Brady Branham was named All District Team, All State Tournament Team, and District We also want to honor assistant coaches Melanie Barker and Philip Troutman, and head coach Dante Turnipseed. And all of these folks displayed exceptional sportsmanship, maturity, and perseverance. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County, and members of the Sevier County Commission do hereby proclaim that we honor and congratulate the outstanding accomplishment, efforts, and triumphs of the Kings Academy Girls Basketball Team on a job well done, proclaimed on this day, fifteenth of April, 2024. It is further ordered that the eighteen ninety-six bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at seven oh five PM on this day to celebrate this accomplishment. We have a motion and a second to approve this, and now if Commissioners, you would cast your votes. Yeah, I forgot to allow an opportunity for any Commissioner to say anything. If anyone wants to make a comment, I'd be happy to recognize them before we recognize the vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It seems like Sevier County must have got to be proud of all the teams in this county that has made the district tournament, made the state tournaments from all, all schools this year. And we, we certainly have got to be proud of all, all the young ladies and men that has participated in that and done, done well for Sevier County and its sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst, and I would second that, as I think every Commissioner would. Second that, it's, it's, one of the good things we get to do in, in the County Commission, and I get to do as County Mayor, is honor achievements from our various young people in the various schools in Sevier County, and we've had a good year of honoring a lot of folks, and we appreciate that, and, and it pretends well, I think, for our county. Any other comments before we recognize the vote? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Okay. Proclamation has been properly adopted, and...
Again, say, as I said before, that this is an opportunity not only for this County Commission and, and myself to honor you all for what you did and say thank you, but also an opportunity off the hat to the citizens of this county to say thank you, because I know it's hard work and dedication that got you here, and that you had to really strive hard, and, and that we all appreciate that, because you represented Sevier County and its citizens and, and all of us very well, and we thank you for it and appreciate what you've done. So, thank you.
of minutes from the previous Commission meeting. Have a motion and a second. Now we have, do we have any discussion or questions concerning this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please proceed to the vote. Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
And it's been properly approved. We'll now move to item number seven, consideration of the reports of the Commission Committees. You have received those in the packet. You have a motion and a second to approve those reports. Do we have any discussion or questions concerning any of the Commission Committee reports as Okay, hearing none? Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Okay. Any reports have been approved. Now if we could proceed to item number eight, which is a report of officials, division, divisions, and departments. If you would bring those reports to the floor. You have a motion and a second. We have revised those reports a little bit to have major categories, reports from the officials, and the Division of Community and Planning Development, the Division of Emergency Services, the Division of Facilities, the Division of Finance Administration, Division of Government Services, Division of Tourism and Communications, and then other departments and state offices that report to this Commission. So all of those are in your packet for review. We have a motion to approve these, subject to any question you might have, and now I'll open the floor for any questions or discussion of any of the reports as submitted. That, that would be appropriate, yes, Commissioner Parton. And, yeah. Mr. Temple, who is somewhere here, I think. He's hiding in the corner. There he comes. Commissioner Parton has asked, is there any update about the internet situation?
No, sir, not at this time, but I do have a meeting on Thursday with TNEDC. It's a webinar talking about the, the conversion map. We've had some, you know, there's been some issues with the area saying that there's internet available in one area, but, you know, that was back when we're talking about the, the census track code. Excuse me. So with that, we'll be able to, to challenge that map, so this meeting, webinar, will hopefully be able to help us understand that a little bit better. So maybe by, by next month, or at least by the next, next committee meetings, I can be glad to give an update to that, at that point.
We're actually going to write a deal.
Yes, sir, we are. You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. And Commissioner Parton, we have met now with both Comcast and Charter, and they're both interested in applying for the grant that's coming available late summer and fall, which would provide internet to the whole county. So we're, and that's what Mr. Temple is referring to. We're trying to get this map right now, because it is, it says there's some areas of the county that has high-speed internet that really does not have it. So we're trying to get the map right before we proceed further, and I think that's one of the things this webinar is going to consider. And I think that's one of the things this webinar is going to consider. Yes, we are. I'll, I sure will. We have Matt Rutter, Mr. Rutter.
Yeah, Commissioner Hurst, it's pretty similar to last month's report. But Blaylocks is pretty much done with all the grading at this point. They're going to move on to electrical next, have the pads, and then go down with base rock out at Centerview. So based on the contract that we signed with them, end of May is when all that work, how long they have to complete that. We're doing everything behind the scenes to be ready on our end administratively for the short-term rentals.
Is everything ready on our end, I'll call it, when the, when the Blaylocks and everybody gets their job down electrician and all? Are we ready to put it in service?
Yeah, we should be ready to put it in service at that time. We have all the equipment. We've had it actually for quite some time now. The last piece is the software piece. We haven't ordered that exactly yet, but they said there's no delay lead time on that. We probably will order that a little bit in advance just so that we can train our folks up on how to utilize that software, try to keep people flowing through the site as fast as possible so we don't have any backup onto Centerview Road, so.
We have some type of time schedule after all the contractors are done. Do we have some kind of time when we might be online?
So, yeah.
Let me address that just a second because that's one thing we want to discuss with the committee, and is, do we want to, when we open this, when the Centerview site is ready, you know, we're going to have another site that does this. And I guess the concern is, are we going to have so many people, so many rental companies going to one site if we don't have the other one open? That we're going to back up there? So I want to have that discussion with the committee at the appropriate time. If they want to move forward with just one site, we'll do that. If they want to wait till we complete the second site, we'll do that. But we're going to have that discussion with the committee.
Yeah, as Chairman had mentioned, that's one thing that we have debated behind the scenes that we'll probably be ready to talk to the committee about next month, which will be, once these, once this site comes online, do we, for lack of better terms, do we pull the trigger now? Or do we wait till we get our secondary site open first? It doesn't mean we don't have to, we're not going to wait to open up the Centerview. We can go ahead and have that open. But it'll be administratively, what do we do? Do we wait till that? And that's something we want to work through with the Special Solid Waste Committee and Governmental Committees and stuff in order to kind of weigh those options there. But as Matt said, the Centerview site, once it's open, will be a significant improvement on that site. And I think that folks will see that pretty quickly. And then once we get these other sites going, that'll be, when do we actually turn that switch on? And the important aspect of that, that switch, once it's turned on, we will have to do several weeks of pre-planning, pre-communication with folks, training with all of our employees. There's a little bit that'll lead up to that as well. So we want to make sure we have all that seamless. We don't want it to be a mess when they do open back up. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you all. Not, Madam Clerk, let's proceed to the voting screen. Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Of course, the officials, divisions, and departments has been approved. Next, we're on public comment. First is public comment on agenda items. We did not have any request for public comment on agenda items. So I'll open our public hearing on rezoning items. And we had one request to speak on a potential rezoning item. And that was from a Mr. Stephen Stockton. Here tonight. Stockton, if you would restate your name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Could I allow my wife Shelley Stockton to speak while I pass out some handouts?
Sure. Either one of you can.
My name is Shelley McMahon Stockton. I'm the fifth-generation owner of the Strawberry Farm on Jones Cove Road. We have some concerns about a proposed Dollar General that will be going to thirty-one seventy-one Jones Cove Road, which is currently going to be right next door to our farm. The community of East Fork has great concerns about the store on this parcel of land. I just want to bring to your attention the concerns that we have that are in the packet that he has given to you. The particular parcel of land, there's a map in your packet that shows it, is zoned for C-two zoning. This zoning was done in two thousand and six. At that time, the community spoke out against the zoning change. And there was even an appeal made in two thousand and seven for this zoning change. The zoning of this piece of property, two C, is the only C-two zoning piece of property in the area. This constitutes spot zoning, which is against the law. In Grant versus McCollum, our own Tennessee State Supreme Court found that spot zoning is against the state constitution, Article eleven, Section eight, which I have provided you in your packet. Even according to page fifty-four of the Sevier County zoning resolution, C-two zoning is reserved for areas of compatible business activities and encourage commercial business in high-traffic areas. Jones Cove Road is a two-lane road through residential and agricultural areas. This is not a high-traffic area. We are asking that this parcel of land, zero six four one three five point zero zero, be rezoned in accordance with the area as either residential or agricultural. The proposed Dollar General at this location raises, also raises traffic safety concerns. According to the TDOT Highway Traffic Count Database, on June twenty-second through June twenty-third, twenty-four-hour period, there was three thousand three hundred and forty-three cars that passed through that point at Harrodsburg Road. That report is also in your packet. We don't need more cars on this road. From four, what we need is an updated study of that traffic from TDOT that includes the GPS remapping of tourist traffic through the area. So the three thousand three hundred doesn't include the remapping and the rerouting that has occurred in the area. We estimate there's over five thousand cars that pass through this potential site in a given day on a two-lane highway with no left-turn lane into this proposed Dollar General area. We are concerned about that. We are also concerned about the weight limits on Jones Cove Road. The Dollar General semi-trucks weigh thirty-five thousand pounds empty and up to seventy-five thousand pounds full. We already have several culverts on this road that are failing. And we are concerned that the road will withstand that. How much pressure can the road withstand? There's also concerns about the business practices of Dollar General Corporate. There are many lawsuits currently against the Dollar General Corporate. A couple of them I've included in your packet. I would have to bring a wheelbarrow in here to give you all of the current lawsuits against Dollar General currently. I don't have the paper or the printing capacity to do so. There is currently formal, a former Ohio Attorney General is suing Dollar General for stealing millions from its customers by advertising one price on the shelf, and then at the checkout, you could charge a higher price. We tested this theory, went to several Dollar Generals here in Sevier County and found that that practice is happening here in Sevier County. There's also lawsuits, there was a one-point-two-million-dollar lawsuit that had to be paid out in New York for safety violations. And there's also another current lawsuit going on that I don't have all the details about, so I will refrain from speaking about it this time. There were also fifty-five gun crimes committed at the stores in Tennessee in two thousand and twenty-three. Those statistics are in your packet. We're also concerned about storm water and natural resources water that are around this area. On parcel zero six four one three five point zero one, which is the adjoining parcel, there was a natural fed, a spring-fed pond that was there that was filled without proper approval. The filling of this pond violates codes three zero two point four point three point three, three zero two point four point three point four, three zero two point four point three point five on page twenty-two of the Sevier County zoning resolution. As a result of this pond being filled, the natural spring is now backing up on the house behind the site at zero six four one three four zero one.
Adam, if you could.
Yes.
Time has expired.
All right, thank you so much. We are asking, we're asking the commission to reconsider this spot zoning as well as to put a moratorium on any more Dollar Generals for a few months so the continued study can be done about the safety and the efficacy of having more than sixteen Dollar Generals in Sevier County. I promise you, this won't be the last one. If the commission doesn't stop, we will be overrun with Dollar Generals. Thank you.
If anyone else wants to comment on rezoning items? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll now move on to the next item, which is item number ten, which is consideration petition twenty twenty-four oh four oh one to release the Sevier County trustee from further liability for the collections of real or personal property taxes for the year twenty twenty-two, as requested by the Sevier County trustee. We have a motion in second to approve that. Do we have any discussion concerning this request? I think we have Tylin Sims representing the trustee's office with us. Do you have any comment, Mr. Sam?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tylin Sims. I am the accountant for the trustee's office. Ms. Fay Loveday regrets that she could not be here tonight, but I am honored to get to come here and bring forward this petition in her stead. I'm petitioning for the release of the Sevier County trustee from further liability for the collection of real and personal property taxes for the year twenty twenty-two, as outlined in TCA sixty-seven dash five dash two four zero seven. As I'm sure you know, the collection of property taxes is crucial for the smooth functioning of our county's infrastructure, services, and development projects. It ensures the essential services such as education, public safety, infrastructure maintenance, and community programs continue to thrive and benefit all members of our community. We are blessed by God to have had another great collection year in the trustee's office. I stand before you to announce that we successfully collected ninety-eight point six six percent of the twenty twenty-two property tax aggregate. This amounts to seventy-seven million, nine hundred eight thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents total collected twenty twenty-two real and personal property taxes. The percentage of twenty twenty-two property taxes to be turned over to the Sevier County Chancellor, Chancery Court is one-point-three-four percent, amounting to one million, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred ten dollars and twenty-six cents. Now I want to take a moment to commend our trustee. Ms. Fay Loveday leads our office dutifully and serves us and the county citizens with excellence. I also want to thank every individual and organization who fulfilled their civic duty by promptly paying their property taxes. Your contributions play a pivotal role in shaping the present and future of our beloved county. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Sam. Do we have any questions concerning this petition to turn over property taxes from twenty twenty-two? Question from any member? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
The petition has been adopted. We are now on next item, item number eleven, which is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-four oh four oh one, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map fifty-one, parcel eighty-four, from R-one rural residential district to C-one rural commercial. We could proceed to the consideration of the resolution. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have any discussion or questions? I'll recognize our planner, Mr. Temple. Do you have any comments concerning this request?
On this particular request, I have no, no comments on it that the Sevier County Planning Commission did recommend for.
Thank you. Any comments from the, or discussion from the commission? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Resolution has been properly adopted. We will now move to item number twelve, which is consideration for resolution twenty twenty-four oh four oh two, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map fifty-eight, parcel fifty-three point zero zero, from A-one agricultural to C-one rural commercial. Madam Clerk, would you please bring the resolution to the floor? Do we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution? Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Now, do we have any questions or discussion concerning the resolution? Mr. Temple, do you have any comments?
No, sir. This is previously, well, it's previously a commercial business. Years ago, we did, we recommend rezoning the front portion of the property for a, on Chapman Highway to be a commercial business.
Any questions or discussion from the commission? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Resolution has been properly adopted. Next is item number thirteen, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-four oh four oh three, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map thirty-five, parcel thirty-two point twenty-six, from A-one, from A-one agricultural district to C-two commercial district. Madam Clerk, would you please bring the resolution to the floor? Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have a motion in a second? Now, do we have any discussion or questions concerning the resolution? Mr. Temple, I noticed on there said proposed use is to be determined. We have any idea what they're going to put there?
The rest of that property that's zone C-two on that side of the road is being looked at to be a high-density residential development. It was, all of this property's been owned by the same individual for years. At the time, the other land was rezoned to C-two. There was a residential house on this particular lot that is still been removed. And it will be a part of this proposed residential development. So Planning Commission agreed to, or proposed to, recommended to rezonate the same as the land adjacent to it.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
I've got one. What, are they going to be using fill lines or sewer there?
They have a sewer connection from the city that they've had for years. There's taps already on the property.
They've got a moratorium on sewer right now.
Huh? Well, but this, this piece of property has had a tap on it already, a manhole on the property. They proposed something a couple of years ago, and they could get it then. And Sevierville said it's not an issue because they already have an existing tap. It wouldn't be a new tap, it's an existing tap.
Other questions from the commission? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-four yes, one no.
Resolution has been properly adopted. We are on item number fourteen. Before we go to fourteen, fourteen and fifteen are a little bit different situation. So I would like, before we... So, I would like, before we vote on those and before I advance to them, Mr. Temple, would you explain what's different about these two?
Yes, sir. These went to the Pigeon Forge Planning Commission for their recommendation and their recommendation was against the rezoning on this item and the next one. The reasoning in their motion was that it would... they felt like it would be considered spot zoning because you'd be putting this agricultural zone in the middle of a residential subdivision development. And our department concurs with that recommendation, so we ask that you vote to deny both of these next two items.
Now... so this can happen in either one of two ways. If I don't get a motion and a second on these... either one of these next two, then they die for lack of a motion and we can do it that way if I don't get a... but if I do get a motion or a second, then a vote for them would be a vote against the recommendation of Pigeon Forge Planning, Regional Planning Commission, and our Planning Department. So, you vote no if you agree with them and vote yes if you don't. So, we can do it either one of two ways. But if we get a motion and a second, that will be how it will proceed.
If the motion is to deny, you would vote yes.
The motion could be to deny.
Yes.
We could have a motion to deny or we could have a motion to approve it and then it be voted down, either way.
Either way.
I'll make a motion to deny. If we've got a motion and a second to deny, and that is we would be denying item number 13, which is resolution 2024-0403, amending the zoning resolution by rezoning tax map 35, parcel 32.26, from A1 agricultural to C2 general commercial district. So, we have a motion to deny that. We have... and we have... Madam Clerk, if you would... move to the voting screen.
It's... it would... those small parcels would be considered spot zoning, dropping an agriculture zone in the middle of a residential subdivision. And the proposal is to do some type of event center, which would be... potentially have a lot of, you know, loud noise and uses that really aren't conducive to in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So, our recommendation would be to deny.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, is the motion to deny 104 or to deny both 04 and 05?
Probably need to do them one at a time, don't we? That's the clerk.
It's either way.
If you're going to make a motion to deny, it'd be easier to combine.
Yes, that's correct. I'll explain that as we go. Why don't we do one at a time?
Okay.
That would be simpler.
So, you're saying if you go to A1, they can put some kind of center in there or something?
Yes. That's where we allow event centers or in A1 or in commercial zones. What we don't want to have them is in an R1 or an R2 zone.
So, Madam Clerk, if we could advance to the voting screen on item number 13, which is a...
So, what... she's going to now put the new motion to deny into the system and that's what will come up on the screen, is this motion to deny 04.
Okay. That's what we want. Thank you. I will... when we get this motion up on the... here now. We've got a motion and a second to deny 2024-0404, which is item number 13 on your agenda. So, we're going to move to the voting screen after you've had plenty of opportunity to discuss it, but understand that if you vote yes, you're voting yes on the motion to deny. Everybody understand that? Okay. We have moved to the voting screen. Now, do we have further questions or comments? We're voting on item number 13 now, the motion to deny.
This is for item 14, 0404.
It's item number 13 on the agenda.
04. 04, but that's the prior one, it's 13. This is item 14.
14.
0404.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, it's item number 14.
Just want to make sure everybody knows.
Item number 14. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion or questions? Item number 14. Call for the question. I'm going to recognize it if there's no further discussion. Hearing the call for the question, Commissioners, please cast your votes. Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Now, moving to item number 15. I think I'm right.
Yes.
I'm close anyway. Thank you. Close is good enough in government work, isn't it? Item number 15, which is consideration of resolution 2024-0405, amending the zoning resolution for Sevier County, Tennessee by rezoning tax map 821, group C, parcel 3.00 and 8.00 from R1 rural to A1 agricultural. This is in the same light, right, Mr. Temple, as the last?
Yes, sir. Across the street.
So, we have a motion on the last one to deny. What's the motion on this one?
The recommendation is to deny.
Recommendation is to deny on this from the planning office. We have a motion and a second to deny. Madam Clerk, if you please advance to the item 15. There we go. A motion, second. Now, do we have discussion or questions concerning agenda item 15, which is resolution 2024-0405? Discussion or questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Did any Commissioner like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Okay. Resolution's been denied. We will now move to item number 16, which is consideration resolution 2024-0406, amend the zoning resolution. This is resolution to amend sections of the zoning resolution instead of changing a zoning. So, this amends section of the voting of the zoning resolution itself. This amendment has been approved by the Sevier County Regional Planning Commission, by the Pigeon Forge Regional Planning Commission, and the Sevierville. Mr. Temple, you want to explain what this resolution does?
Yes, sir. Last month, I brought to you a document that basically revised the entire zoning resolution and all its appendixes. This one is... we went back in doing that, we found a few things we needed to amend. We added some definitions in section 201. There was in our requirement that our customers have to supply a site plan for a residential house that's not in our critical slope zones. We tweaked that language some. I don't know if the copies you all have that you can read are in the red, blue, and black version. If they were, the blue is language that we've tweaked a little bit. Basically, the same... does the same thing as we had before, but made it for clarity. If it was red, it was new language. And the part about site plans submitted, it's... we've had the authority to do it under a section of our critical slope zone, but we starting after the fires, we sat down and we kind of highlighted, gave them item by item, item things we need. I'm just putting that in the document so everybody can see it without question. We made some changes on our parking. The biggest thing changed we had is, and this is coming from a recommendation from both our Building Inspections Department and things that our department has seen. We got a problem on some of our county roads and private roads on the large cabins. They park in the road because we only require two to three parking places on a cabin that might sleep 20. What we've done is followed what some of the larger developments do is we requiring one parking place per bedroom. If it's a six-bedroom house, they're going to have to have six parking places. That still won't... some of these six-bedroom houses may sleep 24 people, but it's better than three. So, that is a change we made. We did...
Mr. Temple, if you're saying the way you said that to your department?
Yes. Yeah. And Pigeon Forge, Sevierville both agreed with this wholeheartedly. They... I think some of the developments require this, their HOAs require it because they don't want to park it in the streets and, you know, it's a problem with people getting around and blocking the road. So, we've added some definitions for how wide a driveway has to be. A private driveway is 12 feet up to now that we had no width. We've tightened up on the grade of a driveway. When it comes down and touches the county road or a private road, it flattens it out a little bit so it doesn't run the gravel out into the road. We further tweaked our sign regulations and consulted consultation with our county attorney to try to tighten that up to prohibit the off-premises signs that we're facing down in the Seymour area. We were 100% convinced that they are... have been not allowed since 2019. This language just made it a little more clear. And let's see... and big thing in the last part of section 700 is our administration section. We no longer... our department, the zoning and planning department, we no longer issue a zoning compliance permit that we've done for years because now we issue a building permit. It comes through our office to start with. My office looks at the zoning requirements. We check those boxes. It automatically goes to the building department. You don't have to pull a permit from us and then go back and pull one from the building department. So, we changed the language to take out that zoning compliance permit to require a building permit. Some of the language of, you know, the zoning officer is the planning director, which is me. And we tightened up some language again in consultation with our county attorney on if somebody just ignores the rules and does it on their own, trying to tighten up what recourse we have to make them come into compliance. We ask that you pass this resolution and within 72 hours, it will be posted on the county's website for everybody to see. No, no, sir. That changed some items all through the book. It basically redid the whole book. These are specific sections that are different than what we had last month. Last month, we... you all reapproved the entire book the way that didn't get approved correctly. It didn't get approved correctly, so that made the book whole. These are new amendments to the book that'll take effect tomorrow. Yes, sir.
Mr. Temple, did I understand you say that we're requiring a site plan for a residential house?
It's... it can be a sketch. It does not have to be done by a professional. They could draw it out themselves for an individual house. It just can be a sketch on one of our tax maps or on the plat. It's the same as it always been. I just... we tweaked some of the language. And now, for the critical slope lots where they're steep, we've had the ability and have done for five years, a surveyed site plan because we got to know... we had to know. We tried to not do it that way, but we just... if they don't look at the contours and the grade of the road and where the house sits on a steep lot, you end up with a driveway that's... you can't park a car on. But we've been doing that for... since 17 or 18.
But now, site plan... I understand the sketch for a house. I mean, I understand that. That's one thing. But now, site plan can get into a whole lot different.
We've been doing that. Nobody's complained for years, Mr. Hurst. They've been bringing it to us on critical slope lots only.
On what now?
Critical slope, the steep lot.
Oh, oh, okay.
Just the steep lots.
Okay. I didn't catch that part.
Yeah. Just the steep lots, yeah.
I got a question. If you do own a steep lot and you cannot meet those requirements for that driveway, is it undeveloped now?
Uh... Most people have been able to work it out somewhere or the other. We've got a 25% maximum grade on a driveway on a steep lot. That's real steep. We had one that... it got built 37 and 1/2% and they asked for a variance from Board Zoning Appeals. It was denied. The owner has now come back and gotten a better contractor and he's actually working out a serpentine driveway that will meet the requirements. So, I've not had one just flat turned down yet. Now, it's... it might be difficult, but you... now, you may have... there's been one or two where you had to pretty much put the house closer to the road and not... they might not get it where the view is, but they can build a house on it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, James, I've got one question too. On the critical slope, where are we at on the acreage on that? So, 50%? Do you have it off the top of your head? Is that going to...
Uh, we're still... the... there's a committee of several of us in our building that have been working on that since April a year ago.
Yeah.
And we're getting close. We're not there yet.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure all this dovetails together, so we're not ready to bring something to you yet.
Thank you.
If further questions? Hearing none. We've got a motion and a second to approve resolution 2024-0406. Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote. Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-four yes votes, one no vote.
Resolution's been properly adopted. We will now move...
Thank you.
Item 17, which is consideration of resolution 2024-0407 to confirm delinquent tax property attorneys... excuse me, let me start back. Confirmed delinquent property tax attorneys compensation. And that is resolution 2024-0407. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen after bringing this to the floor? We have a motion and a second. This has been recommended by the Budget Committee. Do we have any discussion or questions concerning the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, would you explain to the nation and the audience, everybody, what this is for and as far as selling delinquent property?
Yes.
How much... how much...
It... right. It's the same that it's been for 40 years, I guess. It allows our delinquent tax attorney, which this... the Commission approves of delinquent tax attorney is recommended by the trustee and myself, and it sets a compensation at 10% of the delinquent real and personal property taxes as provided by law. So, if he has to sell something, the attorney gets 10%. And this has been... And this has been, um, this has been, uh, the same as long as I've been here, and that's been a while. Uh, and it hasn't changed over the years, but it, it sets that, uh, delinquent tax attorney's fee at, at a fixed rate of ten percent.
About how, do you have a sale? It's not every year, is it?
No, no, it's like every other year, they, they, they'll, because they, the law is so, intricate on it, that you've got to prove that you've tried to, uh, that you've done everything you can to notify the property owner, that you've sent them certified mail, that you've tried to contact them in every way you know how, and that you can't, either you can't contact them or they refuse to pay their property taxes. So it's a long procedure that they have to go through to do that.
Public sale on the courthouse then?
It is a public sale at the courthouse, yes, sir. Any further questions on the resolution? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We'll now move on to item number eighteen, which is consideration of Resolution 2024-0408, which is to appoint members of the Sevier County Board of Equalization. Madam Clerk, if you would, uh, bring that resolution to the floor, and you have that before you. Uh, the five members, uh, to be appointed, as recommended by the Steering Committee, is Frank Bohannon, Ernie Lewis, Mitch McCarter, John McClure, and Roger McFalls. Uh, all of their terms end on April the thirtieth at twenty-twenty-six. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions concerning the resolution? Uh, no. There's the present members. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Resolution been properly adopted. We're down, now to item number nineteen, which is consideration of Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four oh-four oh-nine, to update the fee schedule for the, uh, Department of Water Services. You have that resolution in your pocket. Madam Clerk, could, uh, would you please bring that to the floor? And in the meantime, uh, we have our water superintendent somewhere here. I saw Mr. Schules, and I'll ask him to come for a brief ex- explanation of this. This has been recommended to the commission by the Water Committee.
This only, uh, concerns the two-inch and the one-inch water meter, uh, which is normally a commercial tap, and, uh, right now, we lose money on those. This will not affect the residential three-quarter tap. It's gonna stay the same price it's been for fourteen years, so...
Question from the commission concerning the resolution.
You would tell, uh, tell the commission, if you would, about, we were only charging about half what it was costing the department to put a man in, is that?
Yeah, right now, we're, we're char- on the two-inch, we're charging, uh, five thousand dollars. And depending on what side of the road the meter's on, uh, now they'll, now they run anywhere from seventy-two hundred to eighty-five hundred, 'cause if you have to cross the road, you've either got a bore or open cut, so when you do across the road, it's a lot more. So we just sorta averaged it out to eight thousand, where we, we don't wanna lose money, because if you lose money on these commercial ones, then your residential rate payers are the ones that has to take up the slack and pay for that.
Is a lot, some of these like for, uh, fire protection, uh?
That's what I'm starting to get sort of inundated with right now. A lot of them are for the, uh, for the fire protections.
Sprinkler system.
Sprinkler system, yes.
And, and you get, no, you sell no water on a sprinkler?
Yes. Yeah, we have no way of really recovering the, our loss, because if, if you sell water, that means the sprinklers went off and they've had a bad day, so that hardly ever happens, so...
Other question from the commission, concerning this resolution. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-five yes votes.
Resolution's properly adopted. We are now down to item number twenty, notaries, Madam Clerk.
Thirty-five notaries.
Thirty-five notaries. You have a list of those, I think, uh, be- before you. Would you, uh, we have a motion and a second. We have any discussion or questions concerning notaries? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-five yes votes.
Notaries are properly adopted. Under other business, we have any other business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Took time when this meeting started to recognize young folks who had contributed to our county, and I see a group of men sitting here to my left, that I think probably deserve the same kind of recognition from what they're wearing. I'd just like to take, take time to recognize the veterans that are in the room and those on commission that served this country so honorably.
I think that's an appropriate, certainly appropriate, uh, uh, recognition that we should do tonight, and, uh, those of you that have, uh, been in the service, if you'd stand and allow us to give you a hand and say thank you for your service. Thank you very much, and thank you all for being in attendance tonight. Okay, now we are, anything else under other business? Yes, Commissioner Foster.
Turned down new properties tonight.
Uh-huh.
What is the difference on the dollar for one? Is it, I know it's on, you're about to say, what rights do we have to overturn that or help our citizens that doesn't, don't want this?
That will be something, it's not addressed in this, uh, uh, on, on this agenda, but it'll say, it'll, it's coming, is that right, Mr. Temple?
Planted commission deferred action on the site flat approval, uh, last Tuesday, until they got their, get their stormwater permit through our store department and, uh, the T-DOT entrance permit from Tennessee DOT. Uh, we don't know what, we, stormwater's about ready to issue theirs. Uh, we have no idea what the T-DOT may require, or they could require a turn lane in the middle of Jones Cove Road or D cell lane, until we get that, we will not, we won't know how to handle it. There has been no request from the current property owner to rezone it, anything other than what it is.
So once we zone something commercial, we can't recant on that at all for any reason?
It has always been our policy that the current property owner has to sign the application to rezone it, unless we do some blanket change of the entire subdivision to make it match the current use, which we, we, we did that in the first two or three years. To do that now would probably be questionable. So unless the current property owner requests a rezoning, it would be difficult. This land was zoned commercial in two thousand and six, when the zoning maps were all created.
Please, let Mr. Temple finish, please. Go ahead.
Uh, this, this piece of property was earmarked as being commercial in two thousand and six on the original map, and my knowledge, it has not been changed since. I, I, I have not researched to see if there's been a request to rezone it since oh-six, I just, I haven't done that yet, I can do that.
Hey, James, is it the same property owner, or has it been sold here recently to Dollar General, or do we know?
My understanding is the, it's two parcels of land that was subdivided a few months ago, and the parcel that Dollar General's looking at, I have been told they have bought it, it doesn't show up that way on the tax record yet. Uh, it, uh, I think the property changed hands several years ago to foreclosure to the current owner that has it today.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, under other business? Okay, we are down to adjourn, and we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of adjourning, please rise. Thank you.